This is a meeting of the city council, regular meeting. Thank you all for joining us here tonight. As always, we will begin with the invocation by Deacon Mark Kibler of St. Vincent de Paul Catholic Church here in Cape Girardeau and follow that with our pledge of allegiance. So if you would all please rise and join us.
We bow our heads during this most wonderful time of the year. We ask you, Father God, for the many blessings you -- we thank you for the many blessings you have given us, especially the gift of your resurrection son, Jesus Christ. We ask you, blessed upon our wonderful city and our city leaders, send your Holy Spirit to enlighten their minds and hearts, especially with the gift of wisdom and courage and right judgment to guide their discussions this evening. I pray that all our city residents will show the love, care, and concern for one another that you, Father God, ask of each of us. We pray all this in the name of Jesus Christ, our resurrected Lord and Savior. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deacon. All right, one item in our study session tonight is we have a new council member. Welcome, Brian Johnson, and he will take the oath of office and become official.
You're going to come stand right up here? No, you face the audience. You'll just listen. So please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Johnson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I possess.
That I possess.
All the qualifications.
All the qualifications.
For City Council Member Ward Five.
For City Council Member Ward Five.
As required by the laws.
As required by the laws.
Of the State of Missouri.
Of the State of Missouri.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Cape Girardeau.
Of the City of Cape Girardeau.
I will support.
I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
The Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the charter and ordinances.
And the charter and ordinances.
Of the City of Cape Girardeau.
Of the City of Cape Girardeau.
I will faithfully demean myself.
I will faithfully demean myself.
In the office of City Council Member Ward Five.
In the office of City Council Member Ward Five.
Of the City of Cape Girardeau.
Of the City of Cape Girardeau.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Yeah, if you want to, if you want to have a word, please.
Sure, thank you. I really appreciate this opportunity and as mentioned numerous times, I'm humbled and honored to be representing the fine people of not only Ward Five but of the entire city of Cape Girardeau and look forward to learning from all these people around this half circle, the mayor and the other members. Wish Mr. Cantrell was here tonight, but look forward to working with all these. I've got a lot to learn, but as again I've mentioned many times, I'm going to listen first and speak second and get a lot of guidance and help from these fine people at this table. Thanks.
Thanks, welcome again. We have another item on the study session agenda regarding parking on residential streets. Councilman Cantrell was interested in discussing something regarding that. He was unable to be here tonight, so we will put that off for a future meeting. No presentations tonight. Council, any communications or reports?
You know, we're hopping into graduation season, so I'm just going to give a preliminary congratulations to all of the high school, high school CTC, community college, university graduates that are out there. And I really do hope that anybody that's out there graduating with any type of credential is looking forward to making Cape Girardeau their long-term home. This is an incredible place for people to live, and on a beautiful day like today, it's a wonderful day to celebrate the city of Cape. So encourage those graduates to look in their own backyard, find the value that they've got right here behind them, and encourage them to apply for those positions.
Anyone else?
Nate?
Yeah, I just wanted to say welcome to Councilman Johnson, as well as congratulate him and thank him, as well as his opponent, Mr. Rediger, for running a very clean, honorable campaign, and that's how it should be within the city, you know, for a city race. And so appreciate what you did and congratulations, and get ready to drink from the fire hose. And I also wanted to thanks from the, I also wanted to thank the public, the citizens of Cape Girardeau for passing the Transportation Trust Fund. That is, goes a long way for the upkeep and the improvements of our streets, as I'm sure you've heard over the past couple of months. And I much appreciated as we're able to move forward and advance our city in that way. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, anyone else? Okay, moving on. Several items for discussion. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to appear as an advisory board applicant? If so, you may come forward and introduce yourself and let us know all about you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Dr. John Russell. I'm here as an applicant to the Airport Advisory Board and wanted to introduce myself so you could at least put a face to the name. I'm a lifelong resident of Cape Girardeau, minus eight years while I was in training, and graduated from Central High School and Semo University. Have spent 20-plus years practicing medicine in Missouri as well as Cape Girardeau. Work with the Cape Girardeau County Health Center Board as a medical director and medical consultant. Own and operate the ambulance service, know a lot of faces in this room, I'm familiar with a number of you, I'm new to a number of others. I'm here because of my interest in aviation and to help see our regional airport continue to grow and thrive. My personal belief is that the airport sometimes gets dropped from the public's eye until it comes time for them to travel. There's a lot of focus on commercial travel in and out of the airport and what airline is there, going where. But the airport could and should be so much more. And understanding public-private partnerships from practical experience, I think I might be able to contribute in that regard. The airport is the front door to the community for many, many people that come to southeast Missouri, and having a positive impact on their impression is important. And with that said, I also understand and have served on a number of advisory boards and council at both the federal and state level. The advisory board is just that, it's an advisory board. It's not a management board, it's not a governance board. It's a board that should be there to bounce ideas off of, to represent the public and if need be be an ombudsman to management. But the airport's run by an airport manager and eventually the city manager and eventually you all as the city council. It's not the place of the advisory board to try to tell people how it should be run or operated or otherwise. So it's an advocacy position, it's an idea position, and I look forward to having your all's attention to my application and potentially serving on the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. Next, we will have the Planning and Zoning Commission report. Oh, I'm so, yeah, is there anybody? I didn't think there was anyone else wishing to, oh, I'm so sorry. Come on forward. Nope. I was wrong.
Hi, my name is Brock Freeman, 19, College Street, Ward Two. I'm here to indicate my interest in the Airport Advisory Board. I've had a, I've had the pleasure of having a few different experiences here in Cape Girardeau serving alongside some different economic development activities, as well as, you know, I've served on a city board before. I'd love to bring my experience and my service to the Airport Advisory Board Commission. So thank you all so much.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Anyone else in the audience wishing to come forward? Okay, now we will move on to the Planning and Zoning Commission report. Mr. Martin.
Good afternoon, guys. All right, I'm here in the absence of Mr. Blank tonight to give you guys an update on the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting last week, or two weeks ago. There's only three items on the agenda, so this won't take long. First item, 212 Southwest End Boulevard rezoning. The request was to rezone the property from C1 General Commercial to R3 High Density Single Family Residential. After a very short amount of discussion, this was approved and vote count, all eight in favor, zero nays. Any questions? Okay, second item, 3100 and 3130 Reagan Street rezoning. This is the rezoning of the property from R4 Medium Density Multi-Family Residential to R3 High Density Single Family Residential. This property, if you guys aren't familiar with Reagan Street, is North Kings Highway, just south of Veterans Home. There's some condos and stuff back there. This is just the second phase of the development there. The reason for going from R4 to R3 was just, this isn't actually apartments, it's condos that they're going back to. We did have a few community members there to actually support this, more than anything. So some of the members are, I guess it'd be the neighborhood on the backside, I think it's like Hunter's Way or something like that. But again, this went to vote, two abstinances and, or two people abstained from vote went in a six-zero favorable approval. Any questions there for anybody? Last item was Strawberry Fields Subdivision Platt, Phase One. This, this was, came to you guys before, probably a little over a year ago, that it had expired. This is on Big Bend, right before Big Bend hits Lexington on the west side. So, but anyways, we have had one neighbor in the past there that has had one comment on the subdivision, and they wanted some fencing to match what backs up to the legends and in their house and stuff like that. That's the only, and that wasn't really, I would consider, opposition, but they did not show up today, but the developer did promise to keep those intentions there. Vote count, eight-zero in favor, zero in opposition. So recommended for approval. Any questions?
I had to look up the address. The two, the first one, the 212 Southwest End Boulevard, that's currently residential, right, being used as residential?
It is, it is currently residential. That is correct. Yeah, every property, the property around it is multifamily. They're residential houses, but they're split into multifamily houses there. It basically matches the zoning with the houses that are adjacent to it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, anyone else?
All right, thanks, guys.
Thanks, Mr. Martin.
Appreciate it.
Next, we'll have the consent agenda review. Dr. Haskin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We added six, seven, eight, and nine for your review. Number six is a request to execute an agreement with Southwest Missouri State University for the 2025 Historic Resource Survey. As you know, that is something that we do on an annual basis. Number seven, another request to execute a demolition contract with JAC3 Excavating for the demolition of a building located at 1226 Rainy Avenue. And as all of you know, that we've put a lot of resources in trying to demo some of these abandoned structures and structures that are falling apart in the city to assist in trying to clean it up. And of course, number eight, we have another LNI agreement with EBM Investments for retaining wall in the Fountain Street right away at 13 North Fountain. And finally, we have a lease agreement with Plaza Tower, Plaza Car Wash, Scott Rhodes in his efforts to assist in developing the airport. This lease will go toward him putting up a hangar out there to maintain his airplanes and other aviation-related equipment associated with such. Mayor, that concludes the review.
All right, thanks, Dr. Haskin. We'll move into regular session, begin with the call to order and the roll call vote. Ms. Comrade.
Mr. Bliss?
Here.
Mr. Cantrell?
Absent.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Kinder?
Here.
Mr. Presson?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Thank you. Council, we have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor of adopting the agenda as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. No public hearings tonight, and so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Young, would you please read that?
Bill 2534, an ordinance approving the first amendment to redevelopment agreement between the City of Cape Girardeau and Arsenal Venture LLC. Bill 2534, an ordinance approving the first amendment to redevelopment agreement between the City of Cape Girardeau and Arsenal Venture LLC. Bill 2535, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of Code of Ordances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located in 1918 North Kings Highway in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from C2 to NC. Bill 2535, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of Code of Ordances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by changing the zoning of property located in 1918 North Kings Highway in the city and county of Cape Girardeau, Missouri from C2 to NC. Bill 2537, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of temporary construction easements and permanent easements from property owners for the Cape La Croix Trail Repair Project in the City of Cape Girardeau. Bill 2537, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of temporary construction easements and permanent easements from property owners for the Cape La Croix Trail Repair Project in the City of Cape Girardeau. Bill 2538, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to the trustees of the Mulginacki Family Reputable Trust dated December 27, 2017, for property adjacent to 3556 Pheasant Cove Drive in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2538, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to the trustees of the Mulginacki Family Reputable Trust dated December 27, 2017, for property adjacent to 3556 Pheasant Cove Drive in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2540, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute agreement Southeast Missouri State University for the 2025 Historic Resource Survey in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2541, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute demolition contract with JAC3 Excavating LLC for demolition of a building located in 1226 Rainy Avenue in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill 2542, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute license to the end agreement with EBM Investments LLC to place certain improvements at 13 North Fountain Street. Bill 2543, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an airport ground lease with Plaza Car Wash Inc., Cape Girardeau Regional Airport.
All right, well done, Mr. Young. Council, we have the consent agenda before us. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor then of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We had one item removed from the consent agenda. That is Bill 2539, a resolution affirming the City of Cape Girardeau's commitment to public safety and reducing violent crime as part of an application filing with the Missouri Department of Public Safety's Blue Shield Program. And we have Chief Glick, Police PD, here to talk about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and Dr. Haskin. So the Blue Shield Program recognizes local governments for their dedication to effective law enforcement and community safety. A Blue Shield designation highlights initiatives that enhance public safety, strengthen support for law enforcement, and build lasting relationships with the community. Issuance of the Blue Shield designation will enable each law enforcement agency to access a state grant for training and equipment from a $10 million fund to be administered by the Department of Public Safety. To achieve a Blue Shield designation, local governments must meet criteria that demonstrate their ongoing commitment to a comprehensive, sustainable program to fight crime and promote a safer community. One of those, one of those program requirements, actually the first requirement, is that the local government shall adopt a resolution demonstrating its commitment to public safety. So that's what we're asking you to consider tonight as a resolution to do that.
All right, thank you. Council?
You know, as soon as Mike Keough was sworn in as the governor of the state of Missouri, he announced this program, and I think it was within a couple of hours of him mentioning this that we all started communicating about this is something Cape Girardeau wants to do. You know, we, as a city, we've put a lot of, a lot of funding and everything into our public safety and our police department, and so this is just an additional example of that. So I think this is an excellent opportunity, and I think it's a great way for us to showcase our commitment.
Chief, there's other requirements, you know, really to, in the application and to, you know, project some success, I guess. Do you want to talk about those a little bit?
Good question. So there are a lot of program requirements. The resolution is the first step, but we have to demonstrate that the local government has made extraordinary investments in public safety in the last five years. I think we can easily do that.
Yes.
The community has participated in policing initiatives, we've done that. The local government has partnered with local stakeholders. We've also demonstrated effectiveness in reducing crime or created innovative programs that attempt to reduce crime. Also, the local government's participation in regional anti-crime task forces, we've also done that. Committed to proactive policing practices, we're eligible for that. And some of the examples that they actually list under community policing initiatives are involvement in crisis intervention teams, which we are involved in, community-oriented police station, which I think the new substation will cover that, Citizen Police Academy, which we just started one of those, so we're participating in that already, and then it mentions Coffee with the Cop, which we currently do. So those are some of the few things that we do on the community side of it. It also mentions data-driven policing strategies, and among those, it specifically lists license plate readers, which we participate in, gunshot detection systems, which we have in Cape Girardeau, and a real-time crime center, which we're currently looking at now.
Yeah, yeah, I remember when I, when I first saw it, and I know you, I know your reaction was, hey, we're, we're in good shape to make this application. So, yeah, I'll just join Dan to commend you and your department for really being ready and able. Hopefully, we'll get good news about your application. But, yeah, anyone, any other questions or comments about any of this? Anything else you want to highlight about it, Chief?
No, ma'am.
Said enough? Okay. Well, Council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2539?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor then of Bill 2539, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. All right, we'll look forward to some good news in the future. On to new ordinances, we have a number of those tonight. First is Bill 2544, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding CBD Central Business District. This is the first reading. And Mr. Shrimple.
This amendment's actually an ordinance to correct the CBD regulations. About a year and a half ago, the council passed an amendment to the CBD district regulations to add vehicle service or repair facilities as a special use, which is fine. And prior to that, the code had been amended to reflect the recent, at the time, the constitutional amendment to allow essentially recreational marijuana dispensaries. And so the council had decided years ago to do that for the, for the medical marijuana dispensaries, and then they updated it, you updated it, to add in the recreational marijuana. And when this amendment a year ago, a year and a half ago was passed, it inadvertently had an older version of the text that didn't include that update for the, for the recreational marijuana. So that was a permitted use, it actually got omitted with the last amendment, we're just adding it back in.
Thank you. Is there anyone?
I like to joke, I made my mistake for the year, so it's on me.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to appear on this subject? Okay, hearing none then. Council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2544?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Questions? All right, hearing none then, all in favor of Bill 2544, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 2545, an ordinance annexing land located at 126 Dogwood Street into the city limits of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. It's the first reading.
So I think a couple meetings ago, you had a public hearing on this annexation. It's just a single-family residence, and the well went bad, so they'd like to get on city water, so they executed an annexation petition and agreement for this property. So this is just the ordinance actually annexing the property.
All right, anyone in the audience wishing to appear on this issue? Right, seeing none then. Council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2545?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor then of Bill 2545, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Next, Bill 2546, an ordinance extending the boundaries of Ward Four to include property newly annexed into the city limits of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. It's the first reading.
So this just extends the boundaries of Ward Four to bring in the 126 Dogwood Street that's being annexed.
Anyone in the audience wishing to appear? Seeing none then. Council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2546?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor then of Bill 2546, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Cape is bigger, right on. Bill 2547, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordances of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri by zoning newly annexed property located at 126 Dogwood Street as R1 Single Family Suburban Residential District. First reading.
So every property gets annexed in, has to have a city zoning, so this would zone it as R1 because it's a single-family home.
Anyone in the audience wishing to appear? Council, is there a motion to approve Bill 2547?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor then of Bill 2547, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Bill 2548, an ordinance accepting a permanent water line easement for property located at 4450 La Salle Avenue in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. This is the first reading. Mr. Pulli.
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, Dr. Haskin. The Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints at 4450 La Salle Avenue is building a new church. This prompted need for a new fireman extension for the fire hydrant being drawn from the property. The water main, hydrant, other infrastructure...
Will be turned over to the city as part of the city infrastructure. This ordinance accepts the permanent water line easement from the church.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to appear? Okay, hearing none then. Counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 2548?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. Any further discussion, Counsel? Hearing none then, all in favor of Bill 2548, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 2549, an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission to fund air service promotion and marketing at the Cape Girardeau Regional Airport. This is the first reading. Mr. Stewart.
Good evening, everyone. So, yeah, this is our annual MoDOT funds that they provide us so we can market the airport. The total's going to be for $203,856. 10% match, so that means the city will put up $20,386. So then MoDOT will be putting up $183,000. So there's a vote towards marketing our airport, especially our Chicago flight that started back in October, in hopes of getting our numbers back up to the 2019 and 10,000 appointments.
Anyone in the audience wishing to appear? All right, seeing none. Counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 2549?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor then of Bill 2549, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries.
Mayor, please mark my vote in abstention.
Okay, thank you. Bill 2550, an ordinance accepting permanent utility easements from the trustees of the Mogul Nicky Family Revocable Trust dated December 27, 2017, for property located adjacent to 3556 Pheasant Cove Drive in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. It's the first reading.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance and the next two ordinance involves a small piece of land owned by the city of Cape Girardeau along Hopper Road acquired during the Hopper Road Phase 1 Extension Project. The city of Cape Girardeau obtained an appraisal for the parcel for fair market value. There was an advertised publication in Southeast Missouri paper on January 21, 2025 to advertise a sale. Bids were accepted through February 21, '25 with the invitation for the public to send bids for the purchase of the parcel. Only one bid was received and was awarded to the individual. Ordinance 2538 was adopted for the special warranty deed to Thomas and Karen Sue Mogul Nicky. Thomas and Karen have donated the two utility easements to the city of Cape Girardeau for access to install, maintain, and repair utilities. We will also, in the next one, will be vacating the interest. This order accepts the two permanent donated utility easements on the property. And you have a map in front of you that denotes the two easements that you'll see come on in pink later on, the one on the Hopper Road and the one on the west side of the blue property.
Okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to appear on this issue? Seeing none then. Counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 2550?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor then of Bill 2550, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Bill 2551, an ordinance vacating the city's interest in part of a utility easement at 3556 Pheasant Cove Drive in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading.
The attached ordinance vacates the city interest in part of the existing seven-half-foot-wide utility easement along the westernmost port of the property. A public hearing to consider the vacation was held on April 7, 2025.
All right. Anyone in the audience wishing to appear? Seeing none. Counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 2551?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none then, all in favor of Bill 2551, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. And lastly, on this issue, Bill 2552, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a quick claim deed to the trustees of the Mogul Nicky Family Revocable Trust dated December 27, 2017, for an easement behind the property at 3556 Pheasant Cove in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. First reading.
So this ordinance quick claims the vacated easement along the rear property line at 3556 Pheasant Cove in the city of Cape Girardeau, Thomas and Karen Mogul Nicky.
Okay. Anyone in the audience need to comment? Seeing none then. Counsel, is there a motion to approve Bill 2552?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor then of Bill 2552, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We've had a long agenda on paper, but we've got through it pretty quickly, so thank you. And lastly, under new ordinances, Bill 2553, an ordinance of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, amending the charter of the city, calling an election in the city on the question of amending the charter, designating the time for holding said election, and authorizing and directing the city clerk to give notice to the county clerk of said election. This is the first reading. Ms. Mills.
Good evening. So this agenda is the city of Cape Girardeau. We're considering to call an election and place on the ballot August 5, 2025. It'll be a general election, and it's a proposal to amend the city charter such that the annual limitation that we currently have of fee increases for water, sewer, or solid waste does not exceed 15%. The summary of this is that currently, in accordance with Section 6.13, there are fee limitations in the city charter. And one of those fee limitations is that the city shall not increase water, sewer, or solid waste fees by more than 5% in any given fiscal year. The ballot measure is necessary because the 5% limitation results in revenues from fees that are not sufficient to support, operate, and maintain our water system. In addition, the revenues are not sufficient to pay for capital improvement, which we all know we need desperately. And those are required to continue providing the quality and the quantity of water that the city requires. A yes vote increasing the fee limitation of the city charter would allow the city to establish the water, sewer, and/or solid waste fees by ordinance that are needed on a fiscal basis to adequately fund and provide the services to the citizens of Cape. So the background of this is that in November of 2024, the city had a ballot proposal to increase the water fees more than the charter limitation of 5%. And at the same time, proposed an ordinance to increase the water rates for the city of Cape Girardeau. That ballot measure did not pass. You all will require that we tried to do two things with that particular ballot, and that was to suspend that 5% limitation for that one period so that we could increase the fees based on a water rate study and have a one-time increase. You will also recall that that increase, as we went out there and looked, was approximately bills would increase $8.19 to $13.89 per monthly bill. That's what we were looking at at that time for that ballot.
I'm sorry, for a certain number, for a certain high percentage of households.
Most residences. Yeah, it was an average based on estimates, and it covered most of our residences. And the commercial was in there as well. So it was one shot. We were going to try to suspend that charter and then have an attempt to get that water fee increased so we could support our needed capital improvements. So since that didn't pass, this current proposed charter amendment will be able to modify, the city will be able to modify the rates annually by ordinance, which will have to come to city council, such that the water system can be operated, we can maintain it, and the investment in our capital improvements that we need to ensure that future reliability of the system can be incurred. The proposed new charter limitation would place an annual limitation of not more than an increase of 15% on the water fees. I will say, for example, if we were to increase these water rates a full 15%, an average monthly increase for most people in the city, these are based on approximations and averages, would be somewhere in the range of $2.39 to $2.67 a month. So it's a smaller increase monthly. You have to keep in mind that in the city of Cape, just about every water bill is different because everybody uses a different amount of water. So it's all based on usage and averages. There was a water study, and there still is a water study commissioned by the city, and that's attached to your agenda report. It's the same study that we incurred previously. It stated and reported that our current rates were very modest, and our current rates are below the affordability index. And the study also reports and shows that without the rate increases larger than that 5% limitation, we would be attempting to make needed improvements that will completely deplete all of our revenues and will be in negative reserves by 2027. The 5% limitation is not workable in our existing circumstance. So I'll speak a bit to the affordability index, just to give you a little bit of information. The National Average Affordability Index for water is 1%. And what that means, and I'm going to read this so I don't get my words transferred around, what it means is that a residential customer earning at the citywide median household income level is, on average, using 1% of their monthly household income to pay their monthly water bill. Currently, the city's AI, affordability index, is 0.76%. Again, our rates are modestly low. Please note that when it comes to applying for grant funding, and I know you've heard this before, but I'll present it again because it's very important. Grant funding eligibility generally looks at an affordability index of between 1.5 and 2%. We have a ways to go. So we're on our own on raising the money for the needed infrastructure improvements, and that has to come from a fee increase. I'll also say that without the modification in this charter, the city won't be able to establish reasonable water rates. A 5% increase isn't going to work, and that will fund, and we won't be able to fund our ongoing expenses and capital improvement needs. The city operates the water system as an enterprise fund, and the point with an enterprise fund is it's required to cover the cost of providing those services, including capital costs, with fees and charges. That's our responsibility. We have to set the rates so that we can afford to provide proper water, proper services, and keep the infrastructure intact and in good working order. Our fee structure currently will not do that. The pricing policies for the water fund has to be established appropriately, and the city of Cape Girardeau, at our current water rates with the current 5% annual limitation, cannot sustain operations and maintenance and also fund those capital improvements. The water treatment plan, and we've all seen it, I won't go into details, but just as a reminder here at this point, the treatment plan, the water treatment planned improvements and the distribution system improvements total $56.5 million in the first 10 years. And then there's an additional spend after that up to, and including, be about $63.5 million. So it's a large project. In order to sustain it over that period of time, the limitation that's in our charter has to be removed. Therefore, I'll conclude by saying that the team of staff members that studied the matrix of these issues and the available solutions for the city recommends moving forward with the improvements to the city water system and funding those improvements by amending the city charter limitation to 15%. This will result in the ability to establish annual water rates by ordinance through city council while keeping the water rates in the city reasonable for our customers. This adjustment's critical to protect the reliability of our water system and to ensure that we can continue meeting the city's needs.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this issue? All right, Counsel then, is there a motion to approve Bill 2553?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Second? Okay, discussion. You know, I just want to point out, and you've pointed this out, Ms. Mills, but I'll just, it's worth repeating. What we're doing tonight is voting to get this back on the ballot, this issue, in August, August 5. The proposal that the city has, the facility plan, the remodel and upgrades plan that we discussed last year are the same. The water rate numbers and the financial issues are the same. The city described a three-phase approach to getting all of our infrastructure up to where it needs to be, and that is really the same. There's some changes in the wording, which Ms. Mills described the reason for that, but the changes in the wording on the ballot and kind of the approach, the financial approach we're taking is a little bit different this time around. But we will be discussing this a lot over the summer, that's for sure. This is not, again, we're just voting right now on whether we want to put this on the ballot for August.
Right as I was walking out of my office this afternoon, a colleague of mine pulled me aside and said, hey, read this Facebook post. And it was a Facebook post about a small town in southern Illinois that is not as fortunate as we are to actually have options with our water system. You know, they have a dwindling population and a very aging system, and they're kind of at a crossroads as to what to do. And I'm very thankful that people like our city staff bring options like this to the forefront, that we can actually take action for the next 100 years of this community. The current water system has done us well, you know, for practically a century. And so if we're planning for that future, we need to make these types of investments, and we need to have the ability to do that. And to do that, we go to the citizens. And so this is an exciting time. We get to go out to the citizens and talk to them about changing this and then allowing us to have this flexibility. So I think this is excellent. Thank you very much for bringing it forward.
Yeah, I'd just like to say I'm excited about this proposal. I actually think this is a better proposal than the previous one we put on. Under this proposal, you won't have citizens getting huge increases in any one year. And it ultimately speaks to the real issue, which is that our charter has been so limiting in recent years with that 5%, which is just not reasonable at this time. So I think this is a great proposal, and I'm looking forward to the residents supporting it.
Any further comments, Counsel? All right?
Mayor, I'd just like to make one comment about Ms. Mills and her presentation. You know, I've been doing this for a little while, and this is a very, very complicated process, understanding all the ins and outs of the water system, the way that it's funded, you know, and the idea and the proposal to essentially provide us with the fix. And Ms. Mills did a phenomenal job of standing at that podium and laying out the strategy for success for this city over the next 100 years, as, you know, Dan pointed out. That was a wonderful presentation, very thorough and well put together, Ms. Mills. And I'm sorry, I really don't brag on my staff up here that much, but I just had to do that, and great job.
I appreciate it. Thanks. Well, I think, Mark, you mentioned this is a better proposal perhaps than we had in November. And Dr. Haskin, you and your staff have been explaining to us really the, it's, I've appreciated a little extra time to allow you all to think a little bit more about all of this. And I liked your wording, and that was that I feel like you've gotten closer to the root of the problem, which is, I mean, obviously, we have problems with our infrastructure, yes. But when our charter was laid out, it really, it really hamstrung the city's ability to run this business by limiting it with simply a 5% annual increase possibility. And we haven't even availed ourselves of that every year in terms of some kind of, you know, cost of living increase or whatever you want to call it. This will give us the ability to move forward and launch Phase 2 and get some important things rolling. So, but again, we'll have many more months of talking about this. We're going to have to crank back up. And certainly, yes, you made a very complicated subject, very succinct, and I appreciate that. But it's, we found last year, this is in the first time really addressing the public with this. There's a lot of confusion about it, and who owns what, and why are things going this way, and all of that. And we'll be spending the next few months trying to help further educate the public as to what's going on and why this is needed. So that will be coming. Any further comments tonight? Okay, all in favor then of Bill 2553, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. We had two appointments to the Airport Advisory Board Committee to make tonight. Counsel has voted, and those two applicants selected are John Russell and Kent Ward. Counsel, is there a motion to approve those two to the Airport Advisory Board?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor then of those two applicants, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations to John Russell and Kent Ward for being appointed to the Airport Advisory Board. There were... There were, no one signed up to speak to other business tonight. Counsel, any other business anyone wishes to mention? Hearing none then, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. There's a motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor of adjournment then, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much for your time.